I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for April 22, 2025. Roll call, please.
Bruna.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Curtinback.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Hall.
Like everyone to join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions for today. Would everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice for all. Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom today that has public comments on something that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved, second.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $186,791.38. That's almost a record low probably for us. That's good. Of that, the 60-40 fund is $605, and there was nothing significant or large to talk about. So everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me today?
So roll call vote. Please answer your names, call.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I want to bring to your attention that this week it's National Workzone Safety Awareness Week. This is the 26th anniversary of that event on the national level. Keeping our roadway workers, including our contractors and our own employees, is a priority, is a top priority for Blackhawk County. We have never had a fatality here in the county with our work zones in place, but they do happen. Last May, May 16th, in 2024, Matt Dickerson and Iowa DOT maintenance employee was fatally injured when he was struck by a motorist in a work zone on Interstate 80 near Council Bluffs. On a national level, the vast majority of people killed in work zones are motorists or passengers. And statistics from the National Workzone Safety Information Clearing House show that in 2020, there were 821 fatal crashes in work zones resulting in 891 deaths, including 94 roadway workers who were also killed in work zones that year. So I'm urging motorists to slow down when they're in a work zone, when they're approaching a work zone, obey the traffic signs, and be aware that traffic fines are in place here in Iowa for moving violations. And they are generally double, the fines are double what they would be without the work zone in place. Please stay alert. Please stay off your phones. Construction zones are identified to the Iowa 511's website, and that's available through the app. It's available online. We subscribe to that. Our work zones are in that as well, are available through that as well. I'm working with Gabby to always put information out on social media when our work zones are in place and what the impacts will be. So can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Amanda Fesenmeyer, HR Director. Just wanted to note that we're coming up on open enrollment starts next week, May 1st. I'll be out of the office hall next week, but Sherry Gama of our office will be here to go over a few agenda items next week, such as a couple renewal items right ahead of open enrollment. There won't be any plan design changes, but there is a HIPAA notice that will have the board approve. But departments will be rolling out through that ease platform where employees have to actually log in, either continue their elections as well as acknowledge that HIPAA notice because we have a group health plan that is self-insured. So a couple things that'll be coming next week to you all in my absence, but then I'll be back the following week to do additional work with renewals for medical plan and pharmacy plan and for our benefit consultants. So just wanted to remind you that I'll be gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Moving on to item five, minutes approved for April 22.
So moved, second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We have a hearing later today on proposed rezone number 77-293 for Robert and Heather Bray. Item seven is the consent agenda. Following items drafted upon by a single resolution without discussion unless someone wishes to pull some length from that list for discussion.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved in second. So roll call vote. Please answer your names, call.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the change order number six received from Peters Construction and Envision Architecture for a multi-department renovation project at the courthouse in the amount of $12,806.42 for flooring, drywall, and electrical changes be approved and that the chair be directed to sign as recommended by Rory Given, Facilities Director.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Rory Given, Facilities Director. This round of change orders consist of four change requests. First one was adding some additional framing in drywall. When the contractors opened up some existing walls, we had to furd out just a bit to avoid some data lines, some main data lines that come into the courthouse and feed up to our MIS room. So there had to be a slight adjustment in the floor plan of that. That change request resulted in $1,112.07. The second change request was, we originally had carpet identified for around the outside of the vault door. It was realized that by putting that carpet in, the vault door was going to rub on it. And so we ended up taking that section out and putting in VCT tile. So that change order resulted in a $513.70. Number three change request is a clerk of court refeed. When we got into the electrical panel in the treasurer's office, there were several lines that actually fed over to the clerk of courts that had to be re-fed due to the changing of that electrical panel. Some of that was actually underground, so it was pretty labor-intensive. They had to dig that up and reroute it. That resulted in a $5,063.46. The fourth change request was our owner requested, and that was new pathways in the amount of $6,117.19. That actually, looking in the future for our IT services, that allowed us cleaner pathways throughout the building to the server room here on second floor. So that was something both Facilities and IT Department looked at pretty thoroughly and felt that that would be in our best interest to attack that now rather than later. So as a result, the total change order amount is the $12,806.42.
Rory, is this part of the contingency yet, or are we outside that?
The contingency fee, we are approximately $16,000 outside of the contingency fee. The original contingency was $30,000 on this project.
And we're beyond that?
We're beyond that by about $16,000.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? This is a roll call vote. Please answer your names, call.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Curtinback.
No.
Leyland.
Yes. Other business. Item A is a motion that the appointment of Joseph Guilman as the zoning administrator for Blackhawk County be approved effective April 22, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Want to say anything, Joseph? This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B is a motion to authorize the county auditor to destroy the following monthly washburn sewer reports from July 2004 through February 2016, cost allocation service reports, energy audits, hearings and bid lettings for county properties and buildings, bond payment records for retired issues, industrial healthcare revenue bond transcripts and documents for retired issues, and an assortment of dates that are listed for each of those.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C is a motion to approve the monthly COBRA health insurance rates and coverage effective July 1, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. You want to say anything about that, Kim?
Tim Jamison, Real Estate Tax Manager. We were waiting till you adopted the budget yesterday to bring these rates. If you remember Michelle's recommendation, the Hall recommendation, to reduce the county contribution by 5%, so this just reflects those rates. We want to get these in place for open enrollment so people can start signing up and we know what the contribution amounts will be. But if there's any questions?
Tim, is these basically the same rates that we budget for the employees?
Yes, retirees who stay on the county's health insurance plan pay the same rates, but they play the employer and the employee portion. COBRA, we're required by law to allow people to purchase the health insurance at the same rate that we charge ourselves, plus a 2% administration fee, which is over there.
Okay.
Any other questions, or Kim? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, motion that the 2024 Blackhawk County Wage Listing be received and placed on file to direct the county auditor to publish in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. I assume there's no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, motion that the personnel requisition for elections technician in Unit 1 take race GS 12, full-time replacement in the auditor's office with an estimated start date of June 1, 2025 be approved as recommended by Karen Showalter, County Auditor.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Did you want to comment and see if it's a replacement?
It is. It's not additional staff. This, just as we all moved in the elections department, this is just replacing that last position, but adding that technical piece that I talked about when I presented the budget.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is a motion that the travel request submitted by Al Yu, IT Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same estimated cost $2,777.78 for Natalie Nunez to attend the ESRI SRE User Conference in San Diego, California, scheduled July 13 through 18, 2025.
So moved. Second.
I like that. So many numbers for an estimated cost.
Good morning, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. This is the annual conference that Natalie has gone. This would be her third year or second year? I think it's her third year, actually, so.
You've gone some years.
I went to it one time. It is the largest geography conference in the world. Like, I think over 3,000 people from all over fly to San Diego just to attend this conference. So it's too much for me, but other people that love geography, they get a lot out of it. So it's a great opportunity to learn. Can I answer any questions for you?
This is a motion for the travel request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F, motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same $418.41 for Sherry Gallmeyer, Senior HR Generalist, and Anna Knapp, HR Generalist, to attend the Iowa Public Employment Labor Relations Association Spring Conference in Ankeny, Iowa, scheduled May 1st to 2nd, 2025.
So moved. Second.
All right. So this is a conference we typically attend. It's with our local or the statewide chapter for my Thara. A lot of other human resources professionals from cities, counties, municipalities attend this. We usually go to the spring conference and the fall conference. It's a great opportunity for Anna and Sherry. I, of course, will be out of the office next week, so I won't be attending. But yeah, any questions about the topics or the agendas? It's a great opportunity for us to connect with people that work in the same sector as we do and deal with the same HR issues and opportunities, so.
Hearing no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item G, motion that the travel request submitted by Rory Given, Facilities Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same $144.48 for Brad Metcalf to attend the IMWCA University offered by Iowa Municipalities Workers Compensation Association from April 3rd, up to April 23rd, sorry, to 24th of 2025.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item H is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Amanda Fesenmeyer, HR Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to approve the purchase and installation of one Rico IMC 4510 copier for use in the Human Resources Department with the lowest responsible quote from EO Johnson, Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $6,530. Just to clarify, I think it was a motion in the second?
Yes.
Yeah, if, yeah, second.
Not an exciting purchase, but we are purchasing a new copier. The last time we had our copier purchase was in fiscal year 16. This is a budgeted item. It was part of the very few capital requests that come from Human Resources. We budgeted about $6,000, so it did come in a little bit higher. But we received three bids in accordance with the updated bidding and purchasing procedures policy. So I'm just recommending the low bid with EO Johnson. That's who we've used in the past and worked with IT to ensure that we've got a good unit. And any questions on the copier? Hoping it lasts almost another decade.
What is the cost comparison to leasing compared to buying and stuff like this? I mean, timeline, that's quite a while that you had the last one.
Yeah. So, you know, leasing, we did talk a little bit about that in the service agreement. I don't think our utilization probably justifies leasing from what I understand. They've done larger bids for, with a lot higher volume for like DHS, Public Health, Sheriff's Office. I think sheriffs might lease.
They for sure do.
Yeah. But their volume is far exceeds ours. So, sorry.
No, I was just gonna, Public Health and Sheriff leased their copiers. Leasing generally is good for very, very high volume where it's just, it's strain on the copier, and it's definitely worth it to lease in those situations because they, if anything happens, they will replace the unit. That would have changed a lot.
Okay.
So in our case, our volumes have, we have moved to more electronic, you know, data sets. Like open enrollment is all electronic now. The big thing that we print though is the higher orientation. That's 140-page packet. I do print training materials, so when we have an upcoming training, it's a positive conversation and not so positive situations. So there, we're kind of like the schools, they said, where you might have like a high volume in a certain time of the year, but it's not every month in and month out. So, but yeah, we recommend an outright purchase. We're just with IT. They did talk about a service agreement as well, but our IT department's really well-equipped to handle those service needs as they get. So we're just recommending an outright purchase at this time, but.
This is the resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item I is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, May 6, 2025 on the proposed ordinance number 77-294 from a request submitted by Eric Johnson on behalf of Carolyn Becker to rezone 2.99 acres from A Agriculture to AR Agricultural Residential for an existing house located at 8543 to be approved.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item J, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 on Tuesday, May 6, in the boardroom on the proposed ordinance number 77-295 from a request submitted by Graham Thompson to rezone 2.90 acres of land from A Agriculture to AR Agricultural Residential District to allow for the construction of a single-family home west of 7437 West Marquee Road.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item K, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 on Tuesday, May 6, in the boardroom of the courthouse on the proposed ordinance number 77-296 from a request submitted by Jim Koloff to rezone 1.50 acres of land from A Agriculture District to AR Agricultural Residential District to allow for the construction of a new single-family home located north of 9542 Winslow Road.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item L, discussion and possible action, all aspects of the SF 75 legislation which mandates Johnson's story in Blackhawk County's shift from an at-large supervisory district to district-based elections. And I think we put this on, again, just to follow up on your comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss, you know, I don't know, have you heard anything from the Secretary of State in terms of guidance?
I have. We haven't had a call yet, but I do have a call this Thursday about this in particular. And then I have another call with him on Friday, so I'm hoping to get more information this week.
I think that, I personally believe that the interpretations of this are unconstitutional. I cannot, in my research, find another example of somebody's term being cut in half because of an action by the legislature. And I've found other examples in the country of that happening. And I think that the, I think that's pretty clearly a violation of the Constitution to override the will of the citizens by, you know, the three of us here were just elected to a four-year term that shouldn't expire until 2028. And the interpretation, when we all have to run again, I believe is false and not accurate.
And I know there was additional costs and everything too that didn't seem to be considered for the taxpayers for additional elections and doing this, but, and my thoughts at that time, and I know there's more discussions that we plan to have and see where we want to go probably for next steps, but were the fact that it was, if it was the will of the people, you know, that would have been different had that been the requirement, you know, that we had met all the obligations to have that and do the vote on it for districting, but to just have it imposed on us, and especially when it's just the three, three of us that are selected out of that group to do it, so. Did your comments about how paid, I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, it was, I thought that maybe it would be advantageous to send him a letter since he's coming up with the guidance on this, but I don't know that it's going to move the needle at all. I think this is, you're gonna have to go to the courts.
So maybe we just wait until after more information from, as I say, that you're gonna get, you said it's at the end of this week.
Yeah, we have, all three of us counties have a meeting with the Secretary of State's office on Thursday. And that's really just to get guidance on this precinct plan, so however the board wishes to move forward, we still need to do what's required by law. So we really need to get that temporary redistricting commission appointed. I would like to put a resolution on the board agenda in the next couple weeks. We have to have that confirmed by May 15th, so. I think we should still go through the process and then whatever the board wishes to do.
Well, they need to be providing some written documentation for everyone, not just, I think, having the meetings and expecting you to forward that information onto us. They need to have some guidelines that I think that they can present to, for all of us to be legal and above board and what they want for us.
Yeah, I mean, the goal for them is to provide for creating this precinct plan, which from my understanding, it's the same process we went through with redistricting. So it's largely just procedural. This commission will not, I've had a couple of supervisors ask me about this, so just to clarify, this commission has nothing to do with drawing the districts. So it's largely just procedural and paperwork focused. But I want to make sure that our office is meeting those deadlines, and so we do need to move forward.
We just appreciate so much that they put timelines in for us and haven't given us anything to follow.
No, and that's, I have, I think this is probably my fourth request to them, so I'm just happy that. I got an email yesterday that we are gonna have a Zoom call on Thursday, so I'll share with you whatever I find out. I won't wait until next Tuesday so we can move forward, but yeah, like I said, I just would like to get that on the board agenda to appoint this commission so they can start doing that work.
We appreciate all the work you're doing on it. Certainly not critical of the work you're doing, but just unfortunate that we're having these timelines. And I think that Rich and I were talking to, we have some other conversations we're gonna have this week too, and so maybe we'll have something more.
Yesterday, I sent out an email, some information that we found, or I had the library do some research on when we went from seven supervisors in districts to the five at large. And it's quite informative, goes all the way back to the start of the state of Iowa to the process of having, at one time, our county was ran by the trustees from the townships, not as supervisors. That was very interesting information. And even when 1958, when the voters of Blackhawk County chose to go from seven supervisors in districts to five at large, there was a four-year time period for that. They didn't even go until 1962 before they actually voted on, because it was the timeline, the four-year timeline. So the bigger concern, this is not the will of the people of Blackhawk County. It'd been nice if they would have let us, the voters, make this decision instead of the state making it for them. But in that process, if you've not had the chance to read through that email with all that information, please do. It is quite informative as to the history of Blackhawk County and its representation.
Karen, would next week be too soon? Like the next meeting that we have regarding that? Is when we need to do the appointments?
I would say either next Tuesday or the latest Tuesday afternoon. I had made recommendations in the past, which I can do again, but I think it is very beneficial to have Natalie with GIS be a part of that, myself in the auditor's office. It's going to be the auditor's office with the help of Natalie creating this precinct plan, which again is just procedural, not drawing the districts.
Right.
I think there'll still be a lot of confusion in the public or for many of how that is gonna work. So even though we may understand it, so that's.
Yep.
And I understand Karen, this, the local committee, their role is to verify how many people are in the precinct.
Yeah, so we would just go through the process that we did in redistricting. We're not gonna redraw any of the precincts. We just went through that. So I believe, again, this is just me, what I think we should be doing without having to talk to the Secretary of State's office, but my guess is that we're gonna take our precinct plan that we submitted in this last census and then just incorporating any annexing that happened, which I do know that we've had a few. So essentially just updating those precincts with any annexing that's happened. And then we would be submitting that precinct plan to the Secretary of State's office and LSA, and LSA will draw those districts based upon that data.
And then they present the plan back to us for approval.
Yep.
And we can reject it.
One time.
One time.
Yep. Yep, that's correct. And so our work, the commission needs to be determined, to be appointed and created by May 15th. That's the deadline. And then we are able to do our work till October 1st, which I don't anticipate waiting that long. I'd like to just get that hammered out this summer. And then they have till the end of the year, LSA has till the end of the year to draw those districts. So those districts would be coming back to you end of the year, beginning 2026. And then it would go, it would, once again, all five districts will be on the ballot in '26. And then essentially, not ideal, but you just draw lots to see what districts, it's essentially that there's no more incumbency. So you just have your listed districts. You draw which districts are two-year term and which are four-year term. And then it just is, where you live will determine what then district you're in.
That's what you were talking about too, after just coming up.
So you can, so it's essentially when this goes into effect, it's like Plan One, what we know of. So you can, so it's essentially when this goes into effect, it's like Plan One, what we know of as a supervisor plan is done, it expires, and so with the new plan creates a new districts, which essentially takes away any of the incumbency.
Essentially.
Yeah, I think it's the two-year implementation part that's probably most unconstitutional, um, that, I mean, you're directly overriding the will of the voters, these are four-year terms that we were elected to, the Secretary of State certified those elections.
It's just, it's just that those expire with the new plan, which is a part of the code.
Yeah, which is unconstitutional.
Which the problem is, it's their plan, not our, not our community's plan.
We're not going to get any, I'm just, I'm just stating, uh, the facts of it, and so when you move from Plan One to Plan Three, when you're changing plans, that plan with the incumbency expires, and it's a new plan with new districts. Because, I mean, obviously you don't know what district you're going to be in, and it's where you fall, and could there be a vacancy? You know, maybe there's one district where none of you live, and so there could be one with no incumbents, there could be, I hope not, but two of you get redistricted together, that's why essentially they all expire.
Thank you. Do you need to comment on that note, we'll end on that.
It's moved on.
Item N, discussion on possible action on professional services for the second floor renovation at the courthouse.
So moved.
Second to move.
Oh, you know the motion yet?
I was going to say, yeah. Yeah, Rory's got the floor on this one, I think there's some questions yet.
Uh, good morning, Board, Rory Given, Facilities Director, um, so, this current budget year, we have a, uh, we have monies identified for design services for the administrative wing on the northeast side of the building on second floor. What we're looking at here is a request to combine, because moving forward, we also have a project identified, uh, for the I T, uh, department. And so we felt that combining both of those projects together, we'd get more, uh, it'd be in our benefit as a county, it'd be more responsible having one designer uh, versus potentially two designers or two projects, uh, two separate projects, and so the re, the ask here is that we take both of those projects and combine them together under, uh, one, uh, design. That's the first ask, the second ask is that we look at Envision Architect for these services, and again, this is based on, similar to what we've done in the past with their experience in the building, uh, their experience with the space assessment that they, uh, performed for us a few years back. They are the, uh, architect in charge, uh, for the projects that are going on right now here at the courthouse, also over at the Pinecrest facility. Uh, so we just helped it, hoped that, uh, by putting both of these, uh, future projects under one contract, that'll make for a smoother process and be in the county's best interest, so both asks, uh, for today, for the board to allow the design of both of those to be grouped under one, and then the second ask is for the board to allow, uh, us to go out and, uh, outsource Envision Architect for those services.
And just to be clear again, that wing that you're looking at is really the I T, I, I call it from the board office all the way around to where the courthouse office stands right now.
Yep, basically, um, everything beyond, uh, this back wall here going wrapping around and utilizing, uh, part of the, uh, recorder storage area. Maximizing that space, uh, looking at improving security, improving, uh, uh, lobby space, uh, getting folks in offices rather than grouping them up in, in lobby areas, uh, utilizing the exist, the exterior of the building and getting that natural lighting to come through, uh, would all be goals of this project, um, and then, uh, the, another goal would be, you know, for I T to be wrapped around their server room, which is essentially the heartbeat of what they do, uh, that, uh, that would be the intent of, uh, this design work.
Doesn't mean that both projects would have to go out at the same time for bid, it just means the design portions would be.
So that would be the second ask is, uh, that, uh, we wouldn't take it out for bid, we would just outsource Envision for this, uh, for these services. So that's the part that we would be, uh, uh, foregoing, basically, is the bidding portion. And we did this similar with other projects, uh, in the past with ARPA projects, and I will say, back at that time, it was more of a timing issue. Uh, it was, uh, you know, we were, the clock was ticking with getting those ARPA funds dedicated, uh, and so that, I believe, was a big deciding factor from the board at that time. Uh, this time, it's not so much that as a factor, but more of the familiar, familiarity of the, the building, um, and already here doing projects.
Rory, that's just professional services.
Just the professional services.
Yeah, it's not the construction.
Right, yep, just the design, yes.
But it doesn't mean that when we do go out for bid for the construction phase, that, that has to be both included in that.
Well, yeah, uh, both projects will be included as a construction project, yes.
Okay. But they will be bid.
Yes.
They will be.
But they'd be bid as one project.
Yes.
That's.
Okay, that was what I was trying to question, sorry. We had a facilities meeting last week, and this is one of the discussions we had, it seemed like it makes more sense saving dollars by combining them than taking them as separate, um, projects.
Saving dollars, and I thought, yeah, it'd be advantageous to just make it, because it is the whole thing.
Yeah.
Question, forgive me if you've already told me this before and I forgot, uh, so with any of the renovations, are employees having any input on some of the design or features and stuff like that?
Back when we did the facilities assessment, um, we went to each department, and that was pretty extensive, uh, looking at needs and wants. Um, for this particular one, it's a little bit outside of that facilities assessment, but it's really just, uh, looking at the space that's currently there and how we can better utilize, uh, those outside walls and getting, getting those office spaces uh, along the windows and just opening things up, but most importantly, in my opinion, is improving the security of it, so. But yeah, to answer your question, when we did the facilities assessment, that was a pretty thorough, uh, interview process with each department.
I'd assume we'd still have the departments all involved again, as, as they work with the architect or whatever to make, confirming, making sure what we did have in the plan before and if there were any changes and that type of thing.
Absolutely, so what happens basically with the design process, just as we did the auditors, the elections, um, before, uh, we, this even goes out for bid, uh, we're looking at offices, we're looking at furniture, uh, layouts, um, you know, all of the, all, all of the look, uh, that communication happens before that project just goes out for bid. It isn't, we're just doing a design and sending it out, we incorporate everybody's opinion on it. At some point, at some point, we do have to kind of rein it in, because everybody does have varying opinions at some point, but, uh, we, we do our best to try to, uh, adapt everybody's needs as much as possible.
But I was only asking, just because we, with the, with the new P D, you know, there was a committee that was involved, and it was just kind of nice to have a voice.
Yeah. Yep, just as we did the, uh, health department project that we're doing right now, um, we, uh, had, uh, the health department quite involved with that project as far as the design goes, uh, particularly with the clinic space, using their expertise, um, we would do the same thing here, we would look at what departments would be affected and, uh, what would they like to see if they were given a, an opportunity to, uh, voice their, um, opinion.
Right, nice, thank you.
So do we need one or two motions, and I was going to say do, just to be, I mean, depending on what the.
Yeah, two separate items.
I guess I would think it would be two separate myself.
I, I would, especially like you said, it doesn't matter.
You're doing it, it could be as one motion, it's just got to be very clear that it's a vote.
Yeah, exactly, so that's my, if everybody wasn't going, supporting one, that to be envisioned, and also just to be the one, include the whole wing as one project, and also that we just extend the, um, professional services agreement to Envision.
Correct.
So moved, second.
We'll definitely, we'll do a roll call, just to be clear then, so that everybody's, thank you, please answer your names, call.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinbaugh.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes. Item number N, this is a hearing, and it says nine forty A M hearing on proposed rezone ordinance number seven-seven dash two-nine-three, Robert and Heather Brady to rezone point-six-nine acres from A agriculture district to C M commercial manufacturing district. Item number one is their motion to proceed and place on file proof of publication.
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say the same sign, motion carries. Item two, motion to waive the first reading, as notice was published on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the Wadco Cedar Falls Courier, in accordance with requirements of Code of Iowa, the publication was approved on the request submitted by Robert and Heather Brady to rezone point-six-nine acres from A agriculture to C M commercial manufacturing to allow for a commercial dog kennel, dog boarding, daycare and grooming facility with the addition of a forty-eight by seventy-two, which is three thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet building located at one zero one six two South Hudson Road. That was a motion.
So moved, second, I would just amend, you know, the, the larger, longer applicant mentions breeding, but this part in the motion doesn't mention breeding, I think that should be.
It should be added.
Yeah, I think so.
And everybody's comfortable with that, that it does, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say the same sign, motion carries. Item three is a motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received or placed on file.
So moved, second.
You shall welcome, were there any written comments?
No written comments.
Joseph. Well, welcome, congratulations at being our administrator and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Okay, so, um, I'll go over this request, there was some, uh, mix-up in the packet you got, um, versus with the updated information, um, so I'll go more in depth, um, so they are seeking to rezone point-six-nine acres of land on the south part of, part of their property, um, they'll be putting a new building in if approved on the south part that would hold, um, hold the stalls, um, and they can talk more about that. Um, the LISA score is moderate, uh, but it has not been used in agricultural for quite a while, um, so, they, they're proposed for airing yards, uh, the zoning ordinance does not allow for exercising runways, which is why, um, at, at the planning and zoning meeting, they recommended approval with, uh, conditions. Um, I do have a copy of the zoning conditions that we drafted after, they recommended approval, they recommended approval four to two, um, with say, Agent A D voting against, uh, Eric Schrader, uh, drafted these zoning conditions, we worked with Steve Robiski, uh, the planning and zoning chair to make sure that everything was good, from him, we also worked with the Brady's to make sure that they saw, and we did work with, uh, the neighbors to the north who were the ones who had the main concerns, um, mostly about sound problems, um, and they also refined with these conditions, um, I'll go over them quickly, condition one is that the property should be limited to the use of a commercial kennel, uh, including dog boarding, daycare, breeding and grooming. Condition two is that the facility should be laid out as shown in the site plan, uh, which is this exhibit, so there's a six-foot privacy fence on this north side of the property that will help, uh, dampen the sound from traveling. Uh, the main building where the dogs will be held, um, will also be blocked by the Brady's house, and these existing buildings are just going to be used for whelping, um, so when the mothers are giving birth is what those will be used for. Um, condition three, uh, regarded specific sound, uh, insulation proofing, um, so the condition was a rating of R thirty-six or greater in the sidewall, and a rating of R fifty or greater in the roof with noise cancelling, uh, steel ceiling panels, um, condition four was that six-foot-high solid privacy fence that will help, uh, dampen the sound. Uh, condition five was that there would be no outdoor exercise yards, um, there will be airing yards, but not exercise runways. Um, as part of that condition, that any airing yards on the east side, um, would not extend into the line of sight of the house to the north, um, when planning staff looked at this plan, we did calculate, we did look at the line of sight and as drawn, this plan would, uh, meet that condition, um, if you do approve this request with these conditions, we do have the original signed and notarized document, um, that would then be recorded. Um, these conditions would then become binding, those would stay with the land, um, so even if the property changed possession, these conditions would still apply unless the Board of Supervisors amended them or took them back. Do you have any questions for me?
That would typically be done if it was like change in use of the property.
Yeah.
What's the difference between, uh, an exercise yard and a run, one's a square and one's a rectangle?
Um, so that was quite a tricky discussion, as there's no clear definition of exercise runway in the zoning ordinance, um, so when, when we were looking at it, we decided that these would, wouldn't be considered exercising runways, uh, in our point of view, but there is no clear definition as to what an exercise run would be.
How many, how many dogs in total, max, would be allowed?
Uh, the applicant should be able to answer that question, than I can.
And, and then I'll have more questions for the applicant than you.
Okay.
Is here, would you like to speak?
Good morning, I'm Chuck Boggs.
Dean.
I'm an attorney here in Waterloo, and I'm, I'm here on behalf of Robert and, uh, and Heather Brady. And we've got also Dan Budrow, who's a veterinarian, who has worked with the Brady's quite, quite frequently in, in recent years. And then, of course, Perry, you can see here, he's going to do the construction, he's the general contractor who's going to do some of the work. We've got some additional materials, much of this is included in what we've just gone through, but there are a couple of things that are not, so if you permit me just to provide these to you. So, uh, a- as you know, the, the goal here is, and what the Brady's are seeking is a rezone from A agricultural to a C M, uh, zoning, uh, area. Presently, they have a Labrador breeding facility, and that's okay, that's allowed, but what they want to add, and it's a very logical, reasonable addition to that operation, is a facility that will allow for boarding, grooming and daycare. The, the agricultural zoning classification does not allow for that, but a C M would, and so, uh, that, that's why they're here today. Um, they, in, in the materials that we provided, uh, just kind of going over the tables of contents, the, the aerial photographs, uh, initially just kind of reflect the, on pages three and four, reflect, you know, the area, what surrounds this particular property. Um, o- obviously, there is some agricultural land surrounding that, and we don't anticipate there would be any complaint or concern by the owner of that agricultural land, there is a residential property which has been discussed to the north, um, again, we don't think that that would be a concern. Uh, starting at pages, um, six, seven, eight, nine, is just a portion of a three-D rendering of the, of the main facility that's going to be constructed. Also included in the materials is a business plan, which reflects at some depth and at some length what Mr. and Mrs. Brady intend with. which reflects at some depth and some length what Mr. and Mrs. Brady intend with this facility. And then finally, the course we just went over the agreed to zoning conditions that have been developed and have been agreed to by them and which the neighbors to the north have been agreeable to. So Mr. and Mrs. Brady's position is that this this request is very reasonable and it's really a logical extension of what they're doing and how they're using the property presently. It's also going to allow for substantial positive improvements to this property. This is not going to be a simple building that's going to be thrown up. Just for starters, they're planning to invest dollars of six hundred thousand dollars to put this new building and there will be some additional improvements to this property. It's it's going to have a front office. It'll have a restroom. Of course, it'll have a grooming facility, laundry facilities, food prep facilities, a quarantine area, mechanicals, separate dog daycare facilities and a separate dog boarding room facilities. What their intention is and their business plan would reflect, they want this to be a first class facility. Frankly, they need it to be that way in order to draw the type of business that they want. And so we don't anticipate, and my clients don't anticipate, that this is going to have any kind of adverse impact to the surrounding area. In fact, if anything, it will, we believe, enhance the surrounding area. The if you look at the aerial photographs of the property and pages two and three, I'm sorry, three and four of the supplemental materials, you'll see in particular four. So the property to the north, there's a natural barrier that exists that will only become more dense as time goes on. There's there's three rows of trees there. There's going to be a six foot high privacy fence. The facilities are all going to be constructed south of the residential facility. And of course, there will be no line of sight from the neighbor to the north. So we really don't think that there's going to be any problem with that regard. As far as noise concerns, if any are raised, we think that this actually will improve things because this building is going to be designed in a way to mitigate noise. There will be extra insulation that is applied. There will be a noise proof ceiling and Mr. Yancy can explain any questions you might have concerning construction and the way that they're going to minimize things. They're also going to emphasize a facility that that is a clean, healthy facility for animals. Right now, the Brady's are licensed by the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewarding and that requires random inspections and that will continue. And they've not had problems with those inspections as Mr. Boudreau could attest to. They also have inspections by the federal inspections by the USDA. Again, the goal is a premier facility to enhance things out there and we think that this will do that. Finally, just a note on, you know, any potential concerns with a decrease of value. The evidence that's available really would not support any kind of concern. In fact, just as an example, Arrowhead Kennels, which is at eleven four twenty four Ainsborough, if you look at sales of neighboring properties, there has not been a decrease or any kind of adverse. At least the record reflects that those neighboring properties really have not had a decrease or any kind of detrimental effect in the sales of those neighboring properties. So we don't really think that that would be a concern. Traffic, you know, this is on a busy road. We don't really anticipate, relatively speaking, any kind of increase in traffic that this is going to is going to add. So the detrimental effects here really are, we believe, nonexistent and we think that the beneficial impact is going to be certainly substantial and significant in our opinion. Are there any questions for me or for the Brady's?
Christian, we've I think this we've approved a number of different boarding and grooming operations, but I think this is the first one that's come to us that had breeding also going on. So I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Because as you're aware, there is a problem in Iowa of of different breeding operations. So I just want to get some researches on yours. How many how many dogs are you breeding per year and is that going to expand?
We might go up to nine to ten. Our dogs are hunt test field trial dogs. We only breed dogs that are hunt test qualified. Like, for example, I will send three dogs on a winter trip. My monthly bill for that dog a month is anywhere from seven fifty to two thousand a month to get that dog title. And then we do a health clearance where they check their eyes, heart, hips, elbows. And we do genetic diseases and for us to get a dog, a female that will be a breeding dog, it's it's hard to do. And if we don't get to that level, I give them away to a family that will treat them good for their forever home. Our breeding selection is it's really involved. I don't know how else to say it. Our plans around the United States of America and it's we have a long waiting list. We do not produce a lot of pups.
About how many did you say?
In females.
Or puppies in general?
Uh, we could have up to four litter a year depending on the breed because they're not guaranteed and we will only breed a female when she's healthy. And every litter is registered A K C, so you can't push a dog into more. We're really regulated on what we do.
How long will you guys keep them before they get from birth until?
The pups?
Yes.
We let them go at seven to eight weeks.
Okay.
If they're getting shipped because our dogs still around the United States, they gotta be eight weeks.
Do you plan on expanding the breeding side of things with this expansion?
Expanding the breeding. We do have some younger females that aren't old enough yet or in training yet. So we have our older dogs that then we will retire at a certain point and we have younger ones that will step in as well, so.
Our dogs are also hunting dogs too.
They're our personal dogs, our hunting dogs. He would like to hopefully.
Open a guide service eventually if this works out. So our older dogs will get pushed into the guide service traveling.
Yeah. It's hard to find some good hunting dogs.
Well, thank you guys for coming, by the way. That's where I meant to start with. I do have a few more questions though. So so I appreciate your time coming in here presenting the case. So so at max capacity, how many dogs should we be expecting?
Forty would be fifty and then a daycare on top of it.
Okay.
Which there will be employees. It won't just be her. We already have a manager lined up that has a lot of experience in this.
With the current kennel.
They're in charge of like Rock River.
Riverly.
Yeah.
Don't tell Rock River.
We're highly experienced people.
The impression I have, it makes me think of going to the Humane Society and the dog. And I understand these are two completely different things.
Yeah.
But to know how wild and loud that is when you go into that building. So when you have that many dogs, I don't understand how you could possibly keep the noise down. And so the position I take right now, having been out there a couple of months ago to kind of do a site visit on everything with just the number of dogs that were out at that time, which was minimal. You know, now I'm multiplying that in my head by, you know, X number and I'm just trying to think how like what's the frequency of the dogs being outdoors? How many dogs out time or how many dogs at a time going outside for how long?
That's all regulated by the state of Iowa. Like, uh, Rock River, we took tours everywhere the facility around. Like, he will have up to eighty dogs in a weekend, which we wouldn't do.
Yeah.
And actually, it's it's not as bad as you think. And even though I let out like one employee per dog, so that's why the airing yards, they're not going to be outside outside. They're going to be let out by an employee, if that makes sense.
What, one dog at a time?
That's why they have the multiple airing, just for.
We have multiple airing yards, but you have to keep in mind, like Aloha and all these other boarding facilities, these are in-home dogs. I'd say this should be potty trained, but as far as them keeping them inside, then we just take them outside as necessary. Even our own dogs inside, it's just like any other dog. They should hold it for a period of time and then you just let them out to go potty, bring them back in. We do have an in-home separate daycare area for them. So you're going to have boarding, then you're going to have separate daycare. But yeah, it's going to be limited and even through restrictions, even for daycare for one person, you're not supposed to have more than fifteen dogs at a time. So they're restricted on as far as count per person for daycare. But yeah, airing yard is really, they're going to go to the bathroom, bring them back in. We do have some outdoor spaces. But yeah, we also, I mean, with the insulation as well, it's kind of, I'd say a special insulation for noise cancelling. There's also, we've also looked into, there's other panels that you can either hang from the ceiling. It's a noise dampening material that we've researched as well, kind of really dampens that as well. As far as noise concerns for interior, they go on the outside of the building or they hang from the ceiling, which really bounces, like it restricts things from bouncing, like the noise.
Right.
Yeah, so we've researched that as well.
And the panels that we also kind of use, you will have dividers for the dogs when they look to see each other.
Yeah.
And that really keeps the.
Keeps some calm anxiety down.
Okay.
You know, that kind of thing.
That's not going to be open chain link, does that make sense?
No, they're not going to really.
Top of the line.
Even the front door is going to have, they're not going to be able to see other dogs. So that really holds anxiety from dogs too, but.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
What kind of fence? It was as bright as said privacy fence. So that mean PVC?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
With slots or no slots?
No slots.
The one between the neighbors and us is going to be solid. But the airing yard fence, I would like to have eight foot fence.
Yeah, we're going to have eight foot, not six foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause even police dogs like German shepherds, I mean, they.
They can jump.
You have to have certain areas where you can do that dogs, which that is a possibility, so.
Yeah, we're going to do eight foot instead of six.
We'll have skateproof hatches, rooms for certain dogs.
Yeah.
My hunting dogs can flat foot jump six foot fence, if I may, in a blink of an eye. So we, this is something we are used to.
Wow.
We own a lot of hunting dogs. I'm a huge hunter. I mean, that's we're used to it, so.
What if it does get to the point where it's the noise levels out of control for the neighbors? And I know it was referenced that the effect, there's no evidence to suggest that it will affect home sales or home value. And I haven't spent the time, to be honest with you, looking at what the sales history has been over the last X number of years.
We could actually, if you'd apply, Danny could talk about that. He will have a boarding facility when he stands outside of the building and whatnot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He could come and play that too.
Yeah.
Before we're trying to do that, noise should be pretty contained in tenants of that building.
And for us, part of our thing was, so our master bedroom is in the northeast corner and I was stating like I can't hear our dogs bark at all. And that was so by us even putting the facility in south of our home. I mean, that's just going to add a layer of soundproofing protection as well. I can't hear them at all, even inside our home. So then you go beyond that. But yeah, that's why we're placement. I mean, we've thought about the name, you know, we've kept everyone in mind and trying to build and and put it in the right location and placement, you know, so.
Yeah, I know. It sounds like you guys have had a pretty good relationship throughout this with the neighbors. It's my impression for the most part. So it's just, as I find myself in a place looking for a residence out in the county, you know. Part of that is to escape the city property taxes, but the other one is to get away from the hustle, bustle, the noise of the city where the neighbors sometimes have loud barking dogs. And so that would be kind of the draw for me is wanting to get out in an area where it's mostly a lot quieter.
We also live right on Highway sixty three.
Yeah.
It's like it's hardly city, semi-city, Jake bragging semi. So you, that noise muffles the dogs.
It's more than the dogs do.
It's Jake brag all day long. Right now, it's hardly time. You can't even hear your TV. It's just, it's on a major highway. I guess in our defense or appeal. We live right on a major highway with heavy semi-traffic and tractor traffic. We just got immune to it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
If I could just add, one thing to know also on Mr. Brand is this facility is actually going to improve matters out there. So if you had been out there earlier, I think that's the intention is to build this to make, to mitigate the noise out there. And and Mr. Boudreau, I think, could attest to the noise because he has similar facilities. And so he really has a firsthand experience with, you know, what kind of potential issues that can that can arise. So if you have any questions that he could answer, maybe he could provide some insight and answer those concerns.
Yeah, because he had spring break. It was spring break and he let his fellows like make the dogs.
That's what Danny.
Yeah.
He doesn't have to wait for questions if there's something he could add.
As far as the noise goes, I have a north side and a south side kennel. And I walked about forty, fifty feet away from my kennel on the outside and it is really, really muffled barking. In the morning, when our kennel person comes in, of course, they all go crazy. They're all barking like crazy. And I start my appointments at nine o'clock and my kennel person is doing those the entire time. I never hear the dogs when I'm doing appointments. And we have two walls that are just insulated between us and I never hear them barking. So this thing of hearing them barking as far as that north house is, I think, is absolutely impossible, especially since all the things they're going to do to insulate that building. I have block walls, insulation and drywall. And I swear, come out and listen to my clinic. I have two sides and my landlord lives thirty yards away and has never one time complained about the sound, not one time. So I just, this sound thing, I think, is way, in my opinion, is way, you guys are the sound is not going to be as severe as you're thinking it is because it's just not there. The barks get muffled by the walls and and like I said, they're doing extensive things with the ceilings and the walls to knock that sound down. The everything between the north, the other party and them is there's so many things blocking the sound, but I just don't have a problem with mine forty yards away. And you can hear them barking, but it is very, very muffled. Like you said, if you were wanted to buy a house out there or build something, you'd be worried about the noise. And I I just don't think you'd see it, again, in my opinion. So I don't think you'd see it. Because like I said, we have enough for thirty dogs and on Memorial Day and July fourth and all the holidays, we're full. We couldn't get another dog in there if we tried. And it is, like I said, when you first walk in in the morning, they go crazy because they want fed, they want outside and et cetera. But then I can't hear them barking when I'm doing appointments. So and I have two walls between me and I never ever hear the dogs barking while she's working with them. So just, yeah, that's all I can offer, I guess, on the sound part of it. So and I don't know if you guys have any questions about the health part of it or what the federal government does with that as far as inspecting them. But they're going to drop it, just like they do me. They drop in anytime they want. They don't tell you they're coming and they go in and inspect everything to make sure your your doors and your your flooring and your sanitation and your ventilation is all up to snuff. And if it's not, then they will write you a deal that you have to correct it till, you know, and then they come back again and spot check you. And if it's not fixed, then that's when you can get in trouble. So.
Yeah, I know. I have no issue with the compliance, you know, with regulation or anything. I don't expect that to be a problem. But my other thing is, what if it does, what if it is to the point where it's consistently like, okay, we did everything we could to mitigate this and it's still a quality of life problem? Yeah, I know. That one becomes a civil litigation deal potentially, but and I also, you know, take the stance that, you know, in general terms, pay property taxes for your property as a citizen. Within reason, you should pretty much be able to do what you want on that property, with that property, so long as it's not affecting other people.
Sure.
You know, so. So I don't know. That's I'm just saying that so you guys know where I stand now on this and why, you know, I take that position. So. If I have any other questions for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak or has something more to say on this? I mean, you're certainly welcome to.
I'm Perry. I'm a builder and I guess as far as the sound for the insulation, we have perforated metal on the ceilings. And then R fifty insulation on top of that. And the way sound works is it goes through solid. So if you have a material that will absorb that, then it won't keep traveling. So that's how the sound barrier stops. And I guess one thing about, you know, if you think about dogs barking, can you hear them bark better if they're outside or if they're inside? If you're outside of the, you know, if you're over in the neighboring property, which, you know, which scenario are you going to hear the dogs more?
Right.
So to me, I think it will actually improve the neighbor's experience. Or, you know, if they build a building, that will help that sound because obviously there's dogs right now.
Right. Yeah, how many do you guys have now?
On our property, some are in trade, about sixteen.
Okay.
But some are, some are inside, both of them.
That's it.
Up to sixteen?
We do plan, that's why we want to do this, so they're inside.
To show the neighbors that inside dogs are quiet.
Any other questions for me here?
No, thank you. No, thank you. I showed dogs when I was younger, I don't know what they sound like, we have a bunch of them in a dog show, in one kind of building, so. I, this looks like a very respectable plan that you have here, so.
Back to their south of your property too, as far as you can get away from it, I think, yeah. Appreciate all the efforts that you've kind of made to at least move it and be very aware of your neighbors and yourselves and the business against to a professional standpoint, so. I appreciate all the work you had to go through to, I guess, get, bring this back. And, uh, as I said, a lot of good information that you've really worked hard on, so I do thank you guys.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything more? Okay, I'll do that, there was a motion to close the hearing after the comments were received and that's when, three seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and hold on to proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, it's a roll call vote, please answer, your name is called.
Brad.
Let me just clarify something here real quick. So, uh, and voting to suspend the rules, meaning, what, what exactly does that mean?
To not have to do three, like sometimes, we, we rarely do that, but there's sometimes three and so often we have to set the rules so we don't have to have three hearings.
Got you, okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hertenback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item five is the ordinance adoption, that ordinance amending ordinance number 36, as amended the Black Hawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance, adopted February 2nd, 1999, by adding subsection number 293 to section five, or six, I'm sorry, B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Robert and Heather Brady and to consider the same for adoption. And if adopted, it will be known as ordinance number 77-293.
Moved, second.
Roll call vote, please answer, your name is called.
Hertenback.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brad.
I apologize again, uh, just to clarify, so voting yes would allow this, would be me supporting the project, you go forward? Okay, uh, just for the reasons that I stated before, I'm going to go no.
Leyland?
Yes. It is approved. Item 10, any reports or information from the board?
I just reported, uh, last Thursday, we held the Middle Sea River Watership Management Authority, had our meeting, uh, at Hickory Hills. And so it's really great to be able to show off, um, the Casey Lake restoration. Uh, Mike and Shree and, and Elphank, they all did a really great job presenting and adjusting to the weather. But it's just, uh, people were really impressed with the project and they were really, uh, impressed with the supervisors around for the project as well. So I wanted to pass that along with us too. You know, get that a lot in, in other counties, uh, big things like that. And so, um, it was just, uh, really great to be able to showcase our work to all these other counties and cities across the watershed that are a part of the management authority.
Nice place to show it off.
Yes.
So this afternoon, I believe, is ribbon cutting out of Gibberville, the fire station at 2:00.
There's, the official one was on Sunday, I know, but they did mention that there was one, they did, that somewhere around the 2:00 to 2:30 range. Yesterday, I saw one of them at the gaming meeting and he asked if we were going to be there and I said I didn't remember that we had received an invite, but.
Yeah, I plan on being out there 2:00 today. I do want to remind folks that Monday, the 28th is Workers Memorial Day. We have an event out at the Labor Temple at 5:30. Everyone is welcome to attend. Again, we just kind of go through and, uh, read through the folks who lost their life at work in the calendar year 2024.
What time is that, I'm sorry?
5:30. And then this coming week, I have five more township meetings to attend, uh, from evenings to mornings. So they're getting close to being all done with that. And I did want to reflect a little bit more on facilities meeting. Lynn and I met with Rory this week and we've looked at a couple of buildings, we were at City Hall, did a walk-through there. We are continually looking for options for the attorney's relocation. And we've had a couple of other things, looking at some cost-saving ideas. One we brought forward today with the renovation work and there's another one we're hoping to get some information on this week, we can share more with. But continuing busy week.
Weeks. All blurred after a while. There was an email that we had received on someone about the township cemeteries. And I was just going to let everybody know, I was kind of following up with her, maybe if she asked about even meetings, so I'll do that and report back. If there's more information, if anybody wants to join that, fine, I just wanted to get that one out. Item 11, motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, meeting adjourned.